Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 6, 2003 special meeting of the Haltum City Council. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Before we start addressing those items, Mr. Torres, you want to introduce the person who is acting as our city attorney tonight?
We've got a new face up here this evening with us that most of you probably have not met before, so I'd like to introduce Ms. April Vernig, who works for the same law firm that we contract with to provide our legal services. And Wayne Olson could not be here this evening, so April has come to join us and assist us through some of the discussion tonight, and we'd like to welcome you to Haltum City.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The first item on the agenda tonight, item number one, has to do with canvassing the vote from last Saturday. Our city secretary, Ms. Brenda Staub, if you would, explain to us what, and to the audience, what we're doing and the procedure by which we will proceed.
Well, after the election is done, an official results is posted, which was posted on Saturday night. At that time, the election judge, which was Betty Kingsley, ran the tapes from the machines and gave me, gave the results in these packets to the presiding officer, which is the mayor. The mayor, and then, in turn, will read these results based upon the tapes of the machines, canvassing the election, and that, having the council agree with these canvassing results.
Members of the council, I have here before me the official tape as printed out from the voting machine that registered the vote. Would any member of the council care to inspect these tapes before we proceed? Okay. I've had an opportunity to look over them, and it is consistent with the information each of us has here before us. So for our purpose of canvassing the vote tonight, I will read the total votes unless any member of the council wishes me to read the early vote, the election day vote, the mail-in vote, and the total vote. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, total's fine for me.
Sure. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we do have copies, Ms. Staub, if any member of the audience wishes to have a copy of what I'm about to read into the record, and where are those copies?
There were some available with the agendas. If there's none left, I'll be more than happy to provide those for you.
There are not any left?
There isn't, okay.
Okay, so we will provide those before the meeting is over.
Absolutely, yes.
If you'd like to have copies of them. In the mayor's election, Nancy Watkins, total vote, 991. Calvin Wyatt, total vote, 1250. In place one, Philip Jennings, total vote, 768. Eddie Kimbrough, 257. Jim Sutton, 1,110. In place two, Tracy Henderson, total vote, 1,112. Evan Jackson, 1,040. In place seven, Dewey Markham, total vote, 958. Then the proposition on the senior exemption, the total in favor of, 1,511. The total against, 503. Ms. Staub, is anything further needed at this point as far as reading these figures into the record?
No, sir.
Gentlemen, you have heard the reading of these numbers. I'm open now for a motion regarding this resolution to approve the canvassing of these votes. Councilmember Everett?
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the votes as presented.
We have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Councilmember Henderson?
It's for a second.
Councilmember Fowler?
It's for a second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? There being none, if you'll register your vote, we will display it at this time. And Ms. Staub, you see the results? We move now, I believe we're through with that item, is that correct? We move now to item number two, which is consideration and our action on proposed budget cuts for year 2002, 2003. And with that, I will turn control of this presentation to our city manager, Mr. Richard Torres.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I've got a bit of a presentation I would like to make tonight, and then we've got a little bit more. The finance director's going to step up, and then we're going to open it up at that time just in questions for some of you. As you know, staff's worked pretty hard over the last few months to develop a recommendation for dealing with our declining economy. Budgetary issues are not just affecting Haltum City, but virtually every organization around, both public and private. It just seems like it's now our time to deal with it here. Our proposal came to you last Friday afternoon with adjustments being made even as recent as the day before. The primary problem is that we're trying to find a way to offset expenses within the general fund by as much as $1.2 million. There's no way of knowing for sure that our projected revenues will be off by this much, but our projection is based on available information we have to date, including revenues collected since last October. If we do not cut expenses by this approximate amount before year end, and if in fact we, these revenue shortages will come to play like we think, we risk the potential of reducing our fund balance by this amount. If you will remember, last year we adopted a fund balance policy of 20%. If achieved in this year's budget, we would have achieved a fund balance of $2.8 million out of our overall budget in the general fund of $14.5 million. Setting this mark of 20% was done to assure our creditors and investors that we're sound fiscally and that we're at good risk for loaning money at a low interest. This bond rating is one of the most important assets a city has to maintain and protect. We presently have very good ratings for a city our size, and we need to do what we can to hold on to them. With upcoming bond issues scheduled for issuance, maybe this year as much as $4 million will be issued, and again next year, $8 million, we have an immediate need to protect these ratings. The recommended budgetary cuts, in fact, are not enough to achieve the 20% fund balance policy, but the cuts that you've seen in the package may be enough to retain our credit ratings in balance with minimal budget cuts. And most importantly, I think most of these cuts can be achieved with minimal reduction in service to our residents. The proposed plan may achieve a 15.5% fund balance of $2 million, but this is still far short of the originally anticipated 2.8 million. The packaged recommendations that were sent to you last week have not come easily. There are some details in the package that we would rather not have to deal with, but in the interest of the organization as a whole, we are, there are recommendations that involve expenditure cuts involving personnel. Because our general fund is comprised largely of salaries and related expenses, having to cut $1.2 million has to affect positions. The general fund is made up of approximately 77% salaries. This is not untypical of any other municipal organization. More than a month ago, we froze most of the positions that became or were vacant to help us achieve some of these vacancies. But these were not enough. The package indicates that there are 18 full-time and eight part-time positions currently vacant from a variety of departments. It also indicates additionally that 12 full-time and two part-time positions need to be eliminated to achieve the desired cut. These salaries are not the only planned cuts. There is also detailed information in your packet that includes other operational expenses as well, although salaries do make up the vast majority of the cuts. I realize that there will be likely wide differences of opinions about why some positions should be cut and not others. And in fact, it's a very subjective issue that will differ according to one's own personal desire or priority. In the discussion this evening, I strongly suggest that no mention of names be used. There was no personal consideration put into these recommendations, and there should be no personal consideration put into a decision that may be made. My opinion, decisions should be made based on the overall, long-term good of the organization and not any one individual. That was our approach when developing these recommendations. Although all the directors had some input into this package, there was some modification made by senior management staff before it was submitted to the city council. They are all here this evening if there are any questions that need to be asked of them. I've asked that anyone who has a contribution to be made to the discussion feel free to speak up. I think it may be important to the overall process. Please keep in mind that the focus of the discussion tonight should be on the general fund because this is where the most of the difficult problems exist. However, the water and sewer fund is also suffering to some degree. We've made a rate, and now, we have a rate analysis that's underway that was authorized by the city council a few months ago. It's almost complete, and staff has been reviewing the draft, and we hope to present this to the council pretty soon, when it is totally complete. I must say that it does contain a recommended rate increase for both water and sewer rates in Haltum City. I think we are due for an increase because of the many ongoing projects, increases by the city of Fort Worth, increased personnel costs, and even some other factors, but these results are not quite ready for discussion tonight. The city actually has 19 different funds that are supported through a variety of revenue sources, but again, the general fund makes up the largest portion of these. Our finance director has prepared a brief presentation for you to consider before we open this up for general discussion, and I think you're going to find a lot of the information that Pat has included will be totally relevant to the discussion. I know that many of you have questioned, concerns, and suggested changes to the proposal. I've had some type of communication with most of you in the last several days, so I've had, I do have some idea of what to expect. We do hope you have many questions so that we can help you fully understand the issues at hand. A couple of more points before turning it over to Mr. Elfrink. I need to emphasize again that this package is only a recommendation. Staff fully expects some changes to be, to the proposal. It will be our job to make sure you understand any ramifications of suggested changes or outcomes. Also, we've been advised earlier today that any elimination of personnel due to cuts of civil service positions will require action by the city council in the form of an ordinance with two readings. This comes from, this comes from some very obscure language in the charter that I might add, I believe is very outdated and impractical. I hope that our charter review committee sees it fit to take a look at this area of the charter in one of their upcoming meetings. April Vernig will probably address the issue for us later in the meeting as well. The impact of this may mean that an outcome may be prolonged. We will learn more about this as the night progresses, I guess. I hope none of you think the decisions in this package have been made lightly. It's not what any of us want to deal with, but we are charged to preserve and protect this public organization to the fullest of our ability, and I think that that's truly what we desire to do. Pat?
Thanks, sir. Very good background on a very serious topic. I don't think I have to fill in any additional on that, other than the fact that we knew there was possibility things could get bad last summer, last fall.
Excuse me, just a moment. Can y'all hear Mr. Elfrink?
It is, no, it's on. I'll just get a little closer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We knew there was the possibility things could be looking bad for the nation, for the state of Texas. As we all know, many cities in the state are in trouble financially. And we, city manager and myself, had some very serious discussions regarding the optimism or conservatism of many of the estimates that we made, and oftentimes, we had differences of opinion about whether or not things were going to get better, or if one of us was being overly pessimistic about the future. Unfortunately, with the closing of our major, single largest retailer in town, we all know who that is, that kind of sealed our fate. And at that point is pretty much when we began to take very definitive, very strong action to solve the problem that we are faced with. What I'm going to pass out here for the council is some general financial charts and history information that will help fill in some of the background history of where we have been and where we are going, going at the present time, and help the council understand better the problem and perhaps ask questions that are most pertinent to the issue. And I too, for any member of the public here who wishes a copy of any of the materials I'm passing out, if you'll contact me after the meeting or tomorrow, I'll be glad to share this information with you. If I could direct your attention, please, to the first handout, the one that has the line chart on the front of it. It gives you, and I'm not going to dwell a great deal on any of these, but this gives you an idea of where our fund balance has been the last 10 years. It shows you that it has had its ups and downs. In '99 and 2000, you will see some very significant increases, and you'll see later in this packet how those increases are related very definitely to some significant increases in property values that we had here in this community. I'd like to point out that the average fund balance reserve over this 10-year period has been 19.2%, very close indeed to the goal that the city manager has set for us when he, when he arrived here. And it was also, I think it's also important to point out that the '02 ending, ending fund balance, the diamond on the far, next to the far right-hand side, indicates where we ended up last year, actually, but we did not, we did not project or forecast to end '03 sharply down like that. We expected, we budgeted to end with a 20% fund balance, which would have been a little bit higher than that prior year line. If we could go to the next page, please. The next page, I'm trying to show the council in a bird's eye view, a very quick snapshot, that we have a limited group of revenues that come into the city for the general fund. And you can see at a glance that three of these are by far the largest categories. You have franchise taxes at 25%, and by the way, the total here is $14.3 million. You have other taxes, which is 99.9%, the sales tax, at 28%, and you have property taxes at 24%. Bear in mind that last year, for this fiscal year, property taxes only grew at 2.2%, and we'll see that later. You know already that franchise taxes are not meeting their mark this year. The electric franchise alone was $200,000 short, and in the category of other taxes, which is actually sales tax, we're looking at a potential $800,000 shortfall there. Next page. Property valuation. This is one of the other big three, and I just wanted to show you this to show that for the last 10 years, since the 90, actually not quite 10 years, but since the 1995, '96 fiscal year, we've had increases in our property valuations each year. The largest have occurred in the last two years with a 10.3% increase in FY01 and 11.7 increase in FY02. It wasn't followed that way, though. You will see last year is where we have the 2.2% increase. Now what about the, the next upcoming year? We have a letter from the parent, Tarrant Appraisal District, if you go to the next page. I think I've already copied the council on this letter, and I just want to add a note of caution about this letter. The third paragraph says, and I quote, "Tarrant County has experienced another good year of residential growth in both new construction and in prices on resales of existing property." That sounds very good and rosy for Tarrant County, but I know for a fact, in the 10 years that I have worked at Haltum City, Tarrant County can experience an overall growth, and some of the cities, say to the northeast of us, will experience phenomenal growth, but other cities such as Haltum City in that relatively good year for Tarrant County can experience very slow or perhaps even negative growth. So we have to be very, or excuse me, very cautious with regard to what our property values may be for the next year. If we could go to the next page, page five, you'll see a report that you receive each month with the monthly financial report that is given to council. I just show you this as an illustration of how we try to track our sales tax very carefully, and the forecast that is here shows a $600,000 shortfall, but this forecast does not take into account that the Kmart has left town. This is based on past history, and we know for a fact that that loss of that large retailer is going to have a significant, significant additional effect on the, on the city. Next page, page six. This is another look at the sales tax. It's a look that really I've never taken before. It shows a 10-year annual history of our sales tax revenues. Excuse me. I think it's very interesting to see that since 1994, we've had what appears to be very reasonable, very conservative, gradual growth in our sales tax base. We've had moderate, ongoing growth throughout the last decade. However, with the loss of one of our larger grocery store chains, a large pharmacy that catered to our senior citizens, a loss of the antique mall, and then again, the, the Kmart, you will see what's happened in the last two years. And the '02 year was not forecasted to end in that manner. That was a surprise to us after we made our budget estimates last summer. It wasn't until last summer that the nation's economy began to worsen. I think part of that was due to the phenomenal accounting scandals, the fall of Enron practically overnight, and things like that worsened the national economy, and our general population's trust in, in spending discretionary income at a time when war was imminent and many other factors were influencing large-ticket buying decisions. If we go to the next page, please, page seven. At this point, I'm trying to illustrate and perhaps support and, and describe better a comment that city manager made about when we have to make cuts in the general fund, there are two very large departments that because of their size and the amount of the budget that they take up, when we have to make large reductions in the budget, it's only natural, it's logical, it's, it's mandatory that we must look at those larger departments because that is where by far the lion's share of our expenditures are. In this chart, you will see that the police department is at about $5.5 million in this year's budget, the fire department about $3.2 million, about $8.5 million together. And you see the other major and minor departments listed on here either separately or grouped. You will notice that the, the group here that is called administration is made up of about 10 different divisions that if they were charted individually, you wouldn't even be able to see them on this chart because some of them are so small. You will see, though, that the, the other non-public safety such as street and drainage, the library, and park and recreation are very small operations, very small services compared to the major service that the community provides, which is public safety in the form of police and fire protection. Now the last page, please, then, is, I think, the, the icing on the cake as to why, when major reductions have to be made, why in the general fund, we have to look at staffing, we have to look at salaries. It is, it is very clear, I think, at a glance, looking at the $14.5 million that is budgeted in the general fund, you see very clearly that $11.3 million of that is salaries. That includes health insurance and fringes and sick pay and overtime, but it's all people. Those other categories such as supplies, maintenance, services, capital equipment, and inter-fund transfers are just about minuscule compared to that large 800-pound gorilla that's over there on the left of that chart. That makes it very difficult when it comes to making major reductions in this budget to avoid the very unpleasant and difficult issue of, of reducing your staffing. That concludes my presentation. On this handout, I also passed out to you, and I'm not going to go over it at any great deal, I passed out to you the July 2002 Standard and Poor's bond rating that we received, which we were very proud of at that time. It goes into a great deal of explanation as to how the rating is derived. It describes there are a great many factors that go into that rating, and it may answer some questions for you about the bond rating issue. At this point, if there are any questions this council may have, I'll be glad to entertain them on what I've covered, or perhaps anything else. Thank you.
Okay, if I could, before we open this up to the council, let me explain just briefly the procedure by which we will move forward from this point. First thing we will do is allow each member of the council, if they have questions for either Mr. Elfrink or for Mr. Torres, to have an opportunity to ask those questions. And I would like to ask the council, I know all of us have a lot of questions, in order to, to move forward in a balanced manner, if you could, the first round, limit your questions to three or four questions, and then we'll, we'll have an opportunity to come back later and you be given an opportunity to ask any questions you have. Following the council's asking the questions and making the comments they have before any action is taken, we will open the, the microphone to anyone in the audience who, who wishes to address anything. I don't know what action the council may choose to take tonight, whether they will choose to act tonight or at a later time, but in the event we do take action at a later time, we will not be interested in hearing the same thing over again at a later time. And also, in the interest of time and efficiency here tonight, if someone, before you speaks and they make a point, there's probably not a need for you to make that point all over again. We're very interested in what you have to say. This is a tough situation, and it's not one that I am relishing any at all, but we do want everyone to hear the discussion. We want you to have an opportunity as members of the audience to, to make your comments, and those comments will be limited to a five-minute time as, as we usually do. And Ms. Staub, you have a means by which to, to time that when we get to that point. So having stated the procedure that we'll go by, members of the council, we're now ready for any of you who would like to ask a question or make comments. Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess as we're all aware, this is a very difficult situation for all of us. I think in fairness to the newly, newly-elected council, I don't think it's fair for the, as we spoke a little bit prior to this meeting, for us to come up here and handcuff them. They've been duly elected by the citizenry, just as, just as well as we have. I think it's only fair that we allow them an opportunity to be part of this process also. In saying that, I look at some of the things that, that have been mentioned, and just for, so that the employees that are here and the citizens as well can understand exactly where I'm at. I look at this Standard and Poor's bond rating, and, and I realize that that's an important document, and that's an important thing that we must do the best we can to maintain. maintain. But I realize that there's a lot of cities that are going through this right now, and there's a lot of money out there that's at 2% interest no matter what. So in saying that, I think that we're charged, or I'm charged personally, to make sure that service to our citizens will remain first and foremost. You know, I think that that should be something that we must all look at. You know, we, as employees and as council members and as citizens, we all have to work together through this. And I think that we're all charged, putting forth our best effort to get as good a job done as we can. And I'm not saying that anyone's done that as far as from an employee standpoint or from any of this council or the manager or anyone. I just think that now we really have to tighten up and do the very best we can. I'm affected with it in my own personal company. We're down probably 30 to 40% at least this year. That's tough. I think that another thing that had been stated is about the assets. In saying that, employees are our biggest assets. You know, you guys that are sitting out there, y'all make this thing turn every day. So does Richard, so does Pat, everyone that's in this room. And I don't care, I've always believed that no matter whether you're a street worker, whether you're a library worker, whether you're a fireman, policeman, you know, our policeman is like I tell people, our policemen are not any good to the citizens unless they can get up and down the streets to get and provide a service for them and protect them. Same thing with the fire department. You can't put out a fire if you don't have that water department make sure that those fire hydrants are working. You know, everyone's an important part of this situation, and I think that we all must understand that. So I take great pride in going to do the best I can to look at this document as well as every other document that comes to us. Now, the budget's a long process. It used to, when I first started years ago, we were handed a budget document, and you had one workshop, and you voted on it, and you went on. We've asked the council about a month or two ago, asked the city manager, or whenever we had our budget workshop.
February.
February, we had a budget workshop in, uh, oh, the one we had out at the ranch or whatever the deal was called out in Ponder that we went to Paradise on that Saturday. And we asked the city manager after that to come back and break the budget down, department by department, so that this council could look at it and understand and make a valued decision on every single department, not be thrown a book as a whole and say, here it is, you know, you guys vote on it. I think it's our responsibility to know every pin, every pencil, every nut, every bolt that goes through this city. And I think that we're, you know, I think that we're remiss in doing our duties if we don't do that, if we don't look at these budgets and tear them apart each and every one. I think that when we do that, I don't know that my decision's going to fall in line with what's here. I'm one vote of seven, but I can assure you that I'll do everything I can to protect every employee asset that we have. You know, I'm not going to guarantee everybody's going to be here. I can't guarantee that. But I can tell you that we can look at it, and just because we're given a document doesn't mean that's what we're going to live and die by. You know, we have to make the decisions that we feel like are going to be best, first and foremost for the citizens, and second of all, in my opinion, second of all, for every employee here. We, you know, we're responsible for y'all. And I take that, I take, that's very, very seriously, I take it very serious that, you know, y'all's livelihoods are a part of this. And I hope that everyone understands that, that when things are put into place or looked at, we may look at something, we may come and say, that may be a good idea, and we may look at it a week later and realize it's not. The budget is a long, long process, and this one is going to be an extremely long process and extremely difficult. And as I said, third, this is a recommendation, this is nothing set in stone. So I look forward to, if y'all have input or suggestions, you know, provide them for us and let us have the opportunity to look at them, understand them. We have two new council members that are in the back, give them an opportunity to hear what you say, and because they're going to be part of this decision-making process also. We're all in it together, and we just have to work through it and do the best we can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well said, Councilmember Fowler. Other members of the council, comments or questions? Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I make my comment, why don't you go ahead and introduce the two new council members back there where the people in the audience will know who they are?
Okay.
Do you stand when he calls your name?
Sure. Jim Sutton, new council member, Diane Branson. I will also mention that Councilmember Phil Jennings is very ill tonight. Councilmember Markham had an emergency call out of town and was not able to, not able to be here, so I should have said that up front, but, uh, thank you. Did you have anything further to say?
Yes, sir.
Please, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank each of y'all that came out here. Shows me, one, you have an interest in Haltem City as well as your job and the work that y'all do. We appreciate what you do. We don't get to see you that often. I got this packet about a week ago, and I'd already had a council member call and ask if I'd seen it yet, and I hadn't got home yet. And when I got home and saw the, that there was faces in this packet, not only this position, but there were, I mean, there's not pictures of y'all in there, I'll show you that right now, there's, but when you, when you put a position down, and I've been here a while, so when I read these positions, I know the people that are in these positions. And my first question is, and I called Richard about an hour yesterday or today about it, when we make a cut, why do we have to cut employees? You know, why is that the first cut? Bean counter tells me, I think, how much, 85% of our budget?
Seventy-eight percent.
Seventy-eight percent of our budget is made up by employee wages. I'm going to work with this council, with the new council members as hard as I can. Not only do I want to try to save as many of these jobs as we can, I'd like to find alternative cuts that we could make. I know we sit on a lot of property that we have to maintain that's not bringing in any taxes. It's one of my suggestions I'd like to throw out there to possibly save some of these It's going to take deep study. I originally thought about wanting to table this until next week, and then after I gave it some thought, I thought, well, if we can go ahead and get some input on it this week, we'll have a week to chew on it before we work on it next week. And if we hear your concerns, then we'll have something to work on. But I apologize that we're in this position. We had no idea that our major retailer was going to go out. It's a lesson to be learned that you don't count on your major retailer to be carrying the city. But I just, I charged the city manager and assistant city manager and the finance director to find out every possible option that we can take to keep from laying off these people.
Other members of the council, would you like to, yes, Councilmember Hurley?
Well, I've got a question for the city manager. This recommendation that he's making, will this balance the budget?
Will it balance the budget?
Will this balance the budget deficit as you recommended in this book?
No, no, it does not. It still draws fund balance down by somewhere close to $600,000. We, the budget we adopted this year balanced revenues to expenditures and achieved a fund balance of 20%, which was the policy, the goal. This, the result of the changes that you see here, don't still give us enough to achieve that 20% fund balance. It only hit, allows us to hit a mark of 15.5%. And it's not a level that I'm comfortable with, but as you know, there were more positions originally considered for recommendation several weeks ago. But because of conversations I've had with all of you, getting to know you, I understand where your priorities are and what you are trying to achieve, we've basically gone back to the drawing table and whittled it down. And the result of that, of being able to keep more positions, means we're dropping fund balance, and it is dropping it by 600,000. We will, you know, everything's projected, so you don't really know until the end of the year how it's going to come out, but, but no, sir. It still doesn't give us, it...
Well, this is just, this is just a primer, then, more or less, a starting point?
That's the way I'd like to think of it, because I've not had any expectation that what I presented you would be accepted as is. It never was in my mind, I know you guys too well.
That's where I was going.
Okay. But I have to give you a good starting point for discussion, and I felt like this guided us there.
Well, that's where I was going, because I don't believe this council could accept this as the final answer to the whole thing. There's a lot of, we all have different ideas about different priorities.
As did the staff, yeah.
I feel like, sir...
As did our staff. I mean, we couldn't even ourselves come to total agreement, so I wouldn't have an expectation.
The council is varied as far as opinions. We have our different priorities. I feel like that if nothing else, that we ought to at least have a couple of work sessions to go over this, to see what our ideas are, to have input for you to have, and then do the research and come back and see how much this accomplishes, because we can change the priorities around, more or less.
That's correct. That's my expectation.
So based on that, I would make a motion that we table this thing until after our new council members are sworn in.
Councilmember Hurley, could we get you to hold that motion for just a moment? We've got a couple of members of the council that haven't had an opportunity to speak, but as soon as they do and I have an opportunity to speak, if that's the wish of the council, we'll come right back with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Councilmember Avery, do you have any comment you wish to make? And then Councilmember Henderson.
You know, I have to agree with what Councilmember Fowler and Williams said on the position of having to make these layoffs. It's not something we look forward to. It's not something that we enjoy by any stretch of the imagination. And, you know, when you're put in a situation when a major retailer goes out of business, you know, Richland Hills a few years ago, the Sam's going out of business, you know, the Sam's was probably, I think somebody said about 60% of their, of their entire budget was a Sam's revenue, and we're not in that deep a situation, but I'm going to have a hard time cutting public safety at all, looking at this, and a few other things. And I see some, I still see some fat in here that you and I talked about, Richard, the other day, yesterday, I guess, in the council's budget primarily. I mean, there's $10,000 there for conference training. I don't think that anybody up here is going to be wanting to go on conference training when we're facing layoffs. So, I mean, I don't know how much $10,000 it'll save, but it's $10,000. And with that being said, you know, I agree with Councilmember Hurley. I think we need to talk about this in some mini sessions to bring all of our ideas to the table, and then let you go with it. I think we need to hear if anybody in the audience needs to speak, to come up with some ideas. I think we need to hear those tonight so we can, so we can ball those ideas over and bring those back to the table. With that being said, let Mr. Avery go ahead.
Councilmember Avery?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one point of clarification, there are no monies currently set aside for the council. That has all been removed as a result of this. Also, I do agree with Councilmember Hurley, because this proposal does not address our, it doesn't achieve our, the end result that we're looking for balancing our budget, there's no way that we can, excuse me, even consider passing this. You know, I do think it's important that we meet in the next, coming days or the next week and try and come up with some, with some solutions on this as well. That's all the comments I have, Mayor.
Okay, let me make a couple of comments, and then Councilmember Fowler, and then we'll allow the members of the audience, if they have any comments they wish to make, and then we'll come to Councilmember Hurley's motion that he was prepared to give a moment ago. I've served for a number of years as an elected official and have been through the budget process a number of times, and this probably is the toughest one of those budget issues that I've had to address in the time period I have served as an elected official. I do know that Mr. Torres and his staff went through a legitimate process in bringing forth a budget, and I know this council, earlier this year, when this budget was approved, was very thorough in taking a look at that. One of the things I think that stands out in my mind is, as you do a budget, it will never be what you project it to be, and you don't know for sure where it will be until you get to the end of the year. And because of that, a solid process for addressing budget issues is being conservative in your estimates of revenue and being liberal in your estimate of expenses. And I can assure you that that happened this year, and the vast majority of the time of the years, you'll come out ahead with that process. That's a very legitimate approach. We have had, over the last two years, three years, a downturn in our economy that has resulted in what we're facing tonight, and this has just now, I think, trickled down to our level. But it does call for us here in Haltem City to make some, make some very tough decisions. I agree with Councilmember Fowler and his comments about the information given us from the bond rating companies. I know we do have a couple of large bond issues to let here before too long, and our rating is very important to that, and fund balance is one of the big factors that is involved. I know this process of having to really take a hard look at things is not something that just happened in Haltem City, it's not something that just happens in other cities. I had to do this same thing with my personal finances about three months ago, and I didn't like what I had to do. My business, the same way. Councilmember Fowler mentioned about 30% his business down, mine's 35 to 40%. I've had to make some tough business decisions in that regard. I sat on a number of boards of directors, and in every one of those, the same discussion that we're having here tonight in Haltem City, we've already been through in all of those. One of the things I want to make an observation about, we heard conversation a little bit about allowing the council time to sit down and discuss these matters and find out what our priorities are. That's well and good, and I think there's some validity to that. I want to point out, not only to my colleagues, but also to the citizens of Haltem City, the longer we wait to do that, the deeper the cuts. If we'd done this a month ago or two months ago, the cuts wouldn't have had to have been quite so deep. So the clock is ticking, and every day we wait, the cuts, in order to balance the budget by the end of the year, just have to, have to be deeper. I think most of the members of the council have expressed themselves in areas where they're very cautious about cutting, and I want to do that as my final comment. I believe the number one reason, the number one objective for the city is always public safety. I'm very concerned when I look at this recommendation to see that we have some first lines of defense personnel that are being recommended for layoff. I'm very much in favor of having all the feet on the street we can with our police force and the guys holding the hose when your house is on fire. I'm going to have a real big problem with either of those being removed, any of those categories being laid off. I think we have to focus on public... I think we have to focus on public safety. I think that's our number one objective, and, uh, if we do have to lay off any of these first line of defense people, I want the assurance from the city manager and from the department heads and, and the police and the fire that our citizens will not be put at risk if we lay off personnel in that, what I call the first line of defense, uh, on public safety. And if this council does come to the conclusion that we need layoffs on that first line of defense, I want to be sure that these public safety personnel are the very first to come back on, just as soon as the economy, uh, uh, turns around. So, those, uh, those are the comments, uh, I have to make. And, uh, councilmember Fowler, I believe your light is on, and then we'll open the floor to, uh, members of the audience for comments they might like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, that was for a second for councilmember Hurley's motion, but I had a question prior to that, for, I guess, Mr. Elfrink. Uh, understanding that we just had an election Saturday, and, and as council, as, uh, Mayor Wyatt had said earlier, the, the, uh, senior tax exemption increasing yet, have we, do we have a good, hard number on what the projected cost to the city budget to the general fund that that's going to be?
Yes, Councilman, a, a, a very in-depth analysis was made about two months ago. Uh, I'll be glad to provide you with a copy of that. We did...
I don't care about the copy. I just want to know about what you, what it's going to cost us.
We, we did present it to the council at one time, but I know a lot of...
It was about 108,000 originally, is that...
Originally, that was, that was a couple of months before...
Correct.
That, that was a quick, off-the-cuff estimate. As a result of the detailed analysis, it's about $80,000 in the first year.
Right, okay. So, that is, then, I received that information from you, but I just want to make sure that's correct.
Yes, that is. It, it will change a little bit depending on valuations, as I read the letter from Tad, but I don't s, expect it to change significantly from that number.
But that does come directly from the general fund?
Yes, it does. And, and it impacts our ability to service, our debt service also. Please don't forget, that's not just the general fund's portion.
Correct.
Anything further, councilmember Fowler?
No, sir, that's it.
Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I'd like to ask the employees, uh, if they're going to get up and speak. And I talked to the city manager about this earlier today. If y'all can think of anything in your departments or in your line of work, or your, your day-to-day job that you do, if there's some fat out there that could be cut, make that suggestion to us, put it in an envelope and get it to the city manager. And, you know, a lot of times, you can't see the small picture for the big picture, and we may be missing something, and there may be something out there, uh, that we're not seeing. So, if, if y'all have any ideas like that, it, I'd like to ask the council if, if they would have a problem with that, to let the employees, uh, go ahead and turn in suggestions as well.
I think it's a great idea.
As long as it's not councilmembers.
Well, I, I have one suggestion on that. I know a lot of, uh, a lot of things, I think, that you, you can't go through any situation and, and keep the city manager out of the loop, because he's directly, you know, responsible for the budget. But then, I know oftentimes, employees don't feel comfortable, you know, bringing something forth before their boss or anything else. I don't, I, I agree with the concept and the idea, I just, you know, I, if, if someone has it in confidence, you know, I don't know that that's something that, that they might want to share, or, or, you know, right, if you need to do it anonymously or whatever. I just, I think that it's important that the, the manager gets it, but, uh, if you don't feel like putting your name on it, I don't feel like that that's something that, that you can ask employees to do. Uh, so, I think it's a great idea, I just, you know, if, if, I feel like it, you know, each employee must use their own judgment in doing that. I assure you, I, I hope there's no retaliation done from anything, because we're in this together, and, you know, we have to figure out every, every angle we can to make this situation better for all of us. So, I hope that, you know, you will share ideas with us. I'm not above someone giving me a suggestion to make things better. Uh, so, that's all.
Okay, anything further from the council before we, uh, Mr. Torres, any comments?
No, I'm, I'm quite current.
Mr. Elfrink?
Yes, sir.
Okay, with that, then, we'll move forward to, uh, to the audience. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council, express your, uh, concerns, uh, you have an opportunity to do that at this time. Uh, when you come forward, uh, if you will give your name and address for the record, and, uh, Ms. Staub will be, uh, keeping time, and a five-minute time limit, uh, will be allowed. Okay. Okay, I'll, uh, ask one more time. Okay, yes.
My name's Melissa Pace. We want home address, I'm assuming, 717, Ridgewood Circle.
Would you get closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
I'm short. Hurst, Texas, 76054. Have a couple of questions. I don't know if this is something the city manager can answer or the council. Number one, there's an issue of decreased, uh, sales tax revenue because of some, two major businesses that left. What is being done to try to bring businesses back into Holton City to offset that result?
Is that a question you'd like to answer for Melissa?
Uh, I, I can take a stab at it, in a very general sense, but I'm not specific. Uh, our economic development director is the guy that's particularly charged with, with trying to, to work on those, that, that kind of activity. Uh, there, there are a number of things that, that I know firsthand that Kent has been involved in to try to, to make that happen. The situation, uh, Kent, you want to address it specifically? It's probably, there's no point, because I'll mess it up.
The two businesses that everybody keeps talking about, Wynn-Dixie and Kmart, let me address those first, because I, I don't know that the citizenry quite understands what we're up against with that. There's two big buildings sitting out there, empty, that it would really be nice if we could fill with retailers. Uh, the problem with both of those buildings is that we're not in control, and we don't have much influence over those, those buildings. The, the Kmart is under a long-term lease. Kmart, even though they're going under Chapter 11, they still have the right to that property, over the property owner. In other words, their lease has precedence over the owner's rights. The owner is a California company that owns that property. So, until the bankruptcy court deals with that long-term lease that Kmart still has on it, even the property owner can't do anything with it. Likely as not, uh, once the bankruptcy court gets through with that, the Kmart building, it's going to be a long-term situation before we can fill it with anything. Uh, we do have, uh, a couple of parties interested in it, that are running numbers on it currently, as far as taking that building and the whole shopping center. The whole shopping center is owned by the same California company. The Kro, Kro, the Kroger that is there is doing well. They like their, uh, location, so they're not talking about leaving. So, that is an asset to that center and will help us as far as attracting a developer, somebody that'll invest money in, to the empty Kmart and try to pull in a retail. I know that one, one of the two parties that I've been talking with, well, actually, both of them are talking retail. So, there is the long-term hope that, that we can get retail back into Kmart. It won't be another Kmart, it won't be another big box like Kmart, but it will be, hopefully, a retailer that will generate some sales tax to make up for the loss of that one. But it will be long-term. It's, it's not something that's going to happen overnight. But Wynn-Dixie, same situation, only there's not bankruptcy involved. Wynn-Dixie has a long-term lease, I think, like, till 2018 on that building, so they control that building. And so, what you're looking at is a sublease. Wynn-Dixie will sublease that building to a tenant. So, they're controlling who goes in there. Uh, Wynn-Dixie shopped it to all the groceries, uh, grocers before the end of the year, before, the end of last year. So, all the major grocery chains have already taken a look at it, all the minor grocery chains have already taken a look at it, uh, and, and they didn't bite on it. So, that one's going to be challenging for us to try to get a grocer back in there. Uh, that doesn't stop us from trying. I'm going to the International Council of Shopping Centers Annual Convention in Las Vegas in a couple of weeks, and that's number one priority on my list, is to go hit every grocer there and try to convince them that they've made a mistake by passing on that, that location. Um, we do have, in Holton City, an Economic Development Assistance Grant program that allows us to come to the assistance where we deem, uh, appropriate, and it's up to the Economic Development Corporation to vote on those grants. Uh, but within that grant policy and procedure, it at least gives us the ability to try to bring something to the table to, to attract a retailer. And I can assure you, the indications that we have right now, and I think everybody in this room would agree, we want retail to come to Holton City. Sales tax, even though we can't overly rely on it, is an important revenue source to any city, and it is number one priority for any economic development director to try to seek retail. So, that grant will help us, uh, and it'll just be a judgment call by the Economic Development Corporation as to how much we can afford to, uh, offer to try to sweeten the deal, to get maybe a grocer to come back into that, that facility. We have to interest somebody first, and that's hopefully what we'll be able to do at ICSC. As far as other retailers, um, I know...
Or, if you could, address the 820...
820?
And Beach?
Yes.
Because I think that has, uh, potential for retailers.
Certainly. That, the, I don't know how many people here realize, but this, this city has been in, in, uh, an arduous effort for four or five years, I guess it was, to get a frontage road built on the south side of 820, from Beach Street to Anderson, because there was no access, even though we got prime real estate sitting there. Best commercial property in Holton City as far as frontage on a major freeway, over 100 acres. It had no primary access. Uh, it took us several years to try to get that frontage road in. Um, in the last, uh, year and a half, we were successful in renegotiating with the adjacent property owners and Tech Dot, even though Tech Dot kept throwing obstacle after obstacle in our way, even though we had agreements on the books with Tech Dot to build that thing years ago. Uh, we did succeed in getting, uh, the property owners to fund half of the construction of that and Tech Dot to fund the other half, so it didn't cost the city anything. Uh, this was even after the property owners pulled out several times because of, of delays on Tech Dot's part. We got that frontage road built. It is probably going to be open in a couple of weeks. That will make that property very, very attractive to developers. Uh, so, we are very encouraged, now that we've got some physical evidence on the ground, that is, frontage road, an access road. Uh, we've gone out and flown aerials that show that, that frontage road now, that will take to ICSC as well and market that property extensively to retail developers. Uh, we have been working with the, uh, major property owners. There's two major property owners on that 160 acres, and for a number of months, if not maybe more than a year, I would say, we've been talking with, uh, a major big-box user, like a, like a Kmart, maybe even bigger. I can't say who, but they're all interested in that site. We have some parties that are possibly interested, but they had to see the frontage road come in. I mean, there was too many credibility gaps with regard to that frontage road. Was it ever going to come? Now that it's here, that helps us quite a bit. There may be some other issues. Uh, there's been discussion recently, I think, even in the press, about a referendum, I mean, a vote to, uh, allow alcoholic beverage sales. That is a very important issue for any community. It can make or break a community, especially, it has to do with what your neighboring cities have going on and timing. Uh, you can look at the city of Addison over in Dallas County. It would not be what it is today had they not voted for alcoholic sales. And that one vote alone determined their future 10, 20 years down the road. That's how critical that vote could be for Holton City, because even though businesses like, like, uh, a Kmart, and I won't say, I won't say who I'm talking about, but big-box users like that, uh, they need that, that, uh, package sales to justify coming into a location like Holton City. Excuse me. So, we're hopeful that there's a measure in the legislature that will make that process easier, uh, that would maybe put us in line with a very important decision for this community that would help us extensively with, uh, our future. Uh, with regard to other retail and sales tax in general, uh, I know the situation seems pretty gloomy now because of the big, high-profile users such as Kmart leaving, but we have 1,300 businesses in Holton City, and they continue to come to Holton City. We, in the Economic Development Department, spend as much time on a small mom and pop to come here as we do on a major retailer, the mag, the magnitude of Kmart. And it's one of the things that, that gives Holton City its distinction amongst the other communities in the metroplex, is, is how diligent our staff are in working with even the smallest user. Uh, we can spend over a year just to get a small mom and pop to come here, and we have not given up on any of that, and we, to this day, continue to get those businesses. Our certificates of occupants, for occupancies for the first two months of this year are up over 50% what they were last year. And all you have to do is look around and, and take note of all the small businesses, the fast-food restaurants, uh, the Auto Zones, the this, that, and the other that have occurred in the last couple of years, to know that that trend is continuing in Holton City and will. Uh, so, we have a very diverse, uh, line of, of work in economic development to pursue with this community, because we have a huge diversity in the economic opportunities in Holton City. Um, it, it's just a, a day-to-day process. It takes time, and, and, uh, and we're, we're chipping away on the small as well as the large.
We did not properly introduce Mr. Flynn when he first came up, and I know we're televising this tonight. A lot of people at home are watching, as well as those of you here in the audience. Uh, this is Mr. Kent Flynn, our Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Melissa, did you have, uh, other questions? Uh, the, one more? Okay.
Um, we're talking about layoffs, people's jobs. My question is, the people that are going to be laid off, and I think it's evident that some people are, no matter what we do, are those people just going to be handed a check one day and said, "Sorry, you have, you no longer have a job"? Is there going to be severance? Are they going to have, be notified and have a little bit of time to look for a job? That was my next question.
Let me, let me try to address that, Melissa, if I can. Uh, right up front, I have to tell you, I don't think there have been any decisions made on that, but I will tell you what was included in my proposal. My proposal included a four-week severance, and, and the cuts were to begin, uh, May 16th. Uh, some things happened this afternoon to kind of, a, a, as well as the conversation tonight, it's kind of indicated to me, it's going to take us a while to get to the end of this road. So, not knowing that timeframe, um, I don't expect that there's going to be a lot of lead time notice given to anybody should they be caught in that kind of situation. However, uh, I'd like to think that we can hold intact, uh, the severance. You know, if it's four weeks, that's great. Um, we're going to do what we can. Uh, I, it, it's a concern. It's been a concern all along. It will continue to be a concern with, with not only our, my staff, but, but this group, obviously.
I'd like to make that a point.
But there's no answers here to that, I think.
I'd like to make that a point with the council. I think that's something important for them to try to consider, if at all possible. I mean, it's unfortunate people are going to lose their jobs, but I think it's, makes it a little bit better if they have a little bit to work with, a little bit of time, something that they can work with for their families.
Sure. Good questions, Melissa. I appreciate it, because both of those questions are...
Excellent.
Things have been asked of me regularly, and I, you know, I try, I make an attempt to, to inform people, to the best of my knowledge, but this way, the information's out, so...
Hey, before anyone else comes up from the audience, councilmember Fowler, I think, has a question or comment arising out of, uh, discussion that Melissa had, uh, had brought up, and then, councilmember Williams.
I'd like to ask Mr. Flynn back to the mic, please. Uh, Kent, what was the, uh, you know, I've heard, you always hear rumors, of course, rumors run rampant around here, but I've heard a reason why, uh, I know that, uh, was it Albertson's?
Albertson's.
I believe was pretty serious about, uh, the Wynn-Dixie property?
Wynn-Dixie, yes.
Uh, did they indicate, what was the reason that they didn't choose the property?
Well, um, I can't...
Not to interrupt, but I mean, something, something's funny. It's a brand-new facility, it's in a high-traffic area, it's, it's a beautiful building, uh, a lot of residential around there, it's, everything seems to be good. I don't understand why people keep passing on it. We only have really one other large, am I correct with being Kroger? Is that the only other large grocery chain?
That's correct. We are unders, we're obviously underserved as far as grocers.
I mean, we have 40-some-odd thousand people here, and...
That's correct. I spoke with, uh, the, uh, agent that's marketing that building just today, uh, again, uh, about that very issue, about Albertson's, and he has placed several calls to Albertson's himself. Even though his charge for Wynn-Dixie is to market that building for alternative uses to retail, because Wynn-Dixie, like I said, has already marketed it, all that they're going to for grocers, and they're, the, the new, uh, agent on that building that's been marketing that building since, uh, the first year, has been marketing for alternative uses. the first year has been marketing for alternative uses, Albertson's won't even return his call. But I know from talking with other brokers who I've had acquaintance with in my retail development days, that the reason Albertson's is not here is because they went over to Richland Hills for alcoholic beverage sales. They have package sales at their new location that they're working on, the conversion of the old Sam's Building in Richland Hills. Plus, Richland Hills came to the table with some significant economic development incentive money. So, that, that's the difference right there, is probably more than anything else, is the alcoholic sales.
What were they, were they just asking for beer and wine sales? Is that all that they were asking?
It's package sales.
Just package sales?
And of course, Richland Hills had their election, you know, a number of years ago, a couple of years ago, I guess it was, before I got here.
I, I'd like to add that I don't fully understand this, this marketing aspect of grocery change, but what's interesting to me is that up on the north end of Beach in Fort Worth, brand-new Tom Thumb in a dry area, they have no package sales at all, it's a brand-new Tom Thumb. So, you know, it's conceivable to think that a large chain can move into the area and not have to have.
Certainly. That's not going to be the only factor. The area that you speak of is surrounded by house tops of considerably more attractive, let me say, income levels and numbers. If you'll look at a map, if you'll look at an aerial at that Wynn Dixie site, and you draw a service radius around it, as you would have to for any retail location, you, you know, you have a retail trade radius that you serve, and you look at that aerial, and you're going to see some holes in that aerial, looking down on that aerial, that are not residential house tops that you're going to be serving to. It's just the geography of that site. We have some industrial lands adjacent to that property, some vacant lands that are not ever going to be residential. And then you compare that site to a site not more than a mile away, that is completely surrounded by house tops, okay? That's what we're competing with on that Wynn Dixie site. And it makes, makes quite a bit of difference.
Okay. Another, two more quick things. One of the comments you made on the access road, that, that process has been, I went on the council in 1990 the first time, and it's, it's been a, it's been a long, drawn-out, it was a battle trying to get the thing back then, so we're very fortunate to have it now, and hopefully it's going to do some good for the community, open up a lot of, of very good, what you call, you know, prime, prime real estate.
Right.
One other thing that I think that, as, as Melissa hit on, one thing that we can do is, and do ourselves, and I know we're on TV right now, and in the newspaper, if they want to do us a favor, we can spend our money here. You know, even if you live out of town and you stop and, and you're, you're at work, you can stop and buy a Coke or do whatever. The residents that are here, I know a lot of people go to North Richland Hills or Keller or Watauga to shop and buy groceries. You know, we want to do ourselves a favor as citizens, we can, we can shop here, we can spend our money locally, and that'll help. Every little bit's going to make a difference and help. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Williams?
Don't go away, Kent. Kent?
Don't go away.
Don't go away. They want you to go away. I've got one more question. I've got two questions, first one's for you while you're there.
All right.
If Halton City was wet, how many days would it take you to fill that store?
The Wynn Dixie or at the Kmart?
Yes, sir.
The Wynn Dixie. It's not a cinch even with that, but I think it would certainly go a long way to helping us. I think that there are some, some grocers, at least I've got a list that I could target, that I certainly would have an easier time doing so if it was wet.
Thank you. The other question was, I'm through with you.
Okay.
Please. Ms. Pace brought up a, a very good subject about the people that are going to be laid off, or the, the people that are earmarked on here, and I don't know, do these people that are going to be affected, do they know who they are yet?
Well, let's put it this way, the information that you have before you has been somewhat confidential, not entirely, because in, in a public setting, nothing really is totally confidential, but we've not distributed that to even the media, so.
But it will be out tonight?
If people know what's been recommended, they only know from word of mouth from others.
I guess what I'm asking is, after tonight, will they know?
I have no reason to hold it back.
Okay. Because, you know, if we are mayor whenever, Bob, have you got a comment about, you, you look like a comment mood?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that. I think that it's a little bit premature. I think since this, this thing was initially given to us, and we haven't had any input to it, and if we have a wild discussion and change priorities, we might change some of this. So, I think it'd be premature to say, "These are the people that are going to go. This is the first look."
That's what I wanted, because I don't think any of this is in concrete. I think these are just...
I don't believe it is either.
Suggestions from the city manager, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Williams, did you have anything further? Councilmember Hurley?
Yes.
Did you have?
Oh, that was, that was to reply to Councilmember Williams.
Members of the audience, anyone else like to address the council? And I do want to say again, Melissa, thank you very much for your questions. Those are the kind of questions that need to be asked, and there needs to be public discussion on, so thank you. Anyone else like to address the council at this time? Mike, if you will, give us your name and address for the record, and I think it's important to, to notice that, that Mike is not a city employee. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm just a citizen.
Citizen of Halton City.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mike Stewart. I live at 3521 Larry Street, and the conversation between the city manager and your Economic Development Director and Melissa's questions brought up some issues that I'd like to address. May I address Mr. Flynn, or should I speak directly to you with my questions?
Ask the question first, if you would, and then we'll, Mr. Torres will find the appropriate person to respond.
Okay. I, I hear him talking about the frontage road on 820. There is a lot of vacant land on the other side of 820 that's sitting undeveloped. There is a frontage road there. What's stopping that from being developed? With retail or multifamily housing? I realize multifamily housing won't bring in sales tax revenue, but it will bring in property tax. And as far as a, another retail grocer, there's another large box building sitting vacant at the corner of Stanley Keller Road and Denton Highway. What's to stop a big retail grocery chain from going in there and taking over some of the other adjacent, smaller vacancies in that building and remodeling it into a larger grocery store? That's all I have.
Kent's best.
Told you you should stay on the front. Thank you, Mike, for, for those questions. Before Kent starts talking, I want to remind everyone, it, it's easy for us to get off of subject, and that's kind of what we're doing here, getting really down in details on economic development. Melissa raised the issue, what is being done. We're aggressively seeking and pursuing economic development. Now, it's probably not conducive to, to what we're trying to achieve tonight, to get off into the, the very fine particulars of every piece of property and all the questions, ramifications of, of that. But please go ahead, if you would, and answer.
Okay. I appreciate your adding that insight, and I don't mind speaking about this, because I haven't had a chance to really talk too much about these issues, and I kind of look at it as a retail 101, you know, trying to get people to understand what does it take to make retail happen. I have a background as a retail developer prior to coming here, and, and a lot of the, I guess, ordinary people that are busy doing their, their jobs day-to-day don't quite understand what it takes. It's a business decision, just like any decision anybody makes in their own business, as to whether or not a company will build retail. All we see is residence is what we want and need, you know, for our own personal needs here in the community. But any, any, for any business to come and invest, they have their own criteria. The two sites that Mike brought up are very frustrating examples, the northeast corner of 820 and, and Beach Street. When I started here a couple of years ago, everybody kept pointing to what was going on on the west side of Beach Street in Fort Worth, and then they'd point to that corner and say, "Well, why haven't we gotten anything over here?" And you have to look a bit further north to understand what's going on at 820 and Beach. You have to look at exactly a mile north at Western Center. I think it was mentioned earlier, there's three corners up there that are anchored by grocery centers, centers. And again, it's a situation where tho, that intersection is surrounded with a service radius of house tops that those retailers can serve conveniently without much drive time. You come on down to 820 and Beach, and south of Beach, you have a lot of acreage we have that's either vacant, multifamily-zoned, or has developed currently in multifamily recently, which is an asset to have as far as driving up the numbers, but you have a lot of industrial land as well that will never generate retail sales. And so, really, you look at maybe a half of the pie on the service radius at 820 versus, 820 and Beach versus a mile north where you're completely full with that service radius. The pad sites that have been going up along Beach Street in front of the northeast corner of Beach and 820 do generate retail sales, but obviously, we would have preferred a grocer or a major big box. And there was big box discussions on that site four or five years ago, wouldn't you say, Greg? It was actually a Home Depot or a Lowe's, a Lowe's. And the city, city didn't pull down the Lowe's. It went northeast of us. Again, it's a function of demographics. If you look at the income levels and the number of house tops that are northeast of us, that are north of 820, and you're a retailer, where are you going to locate? Are you going to locate up there? Are you going to locate down here and struggle? Especially with a, a road that's not in, 820 is going to be widened. So, that's an uncertain future for a retailer. So, even though it seems obvious to us, to, to the unsuspecting, you know, commoner that, hey, we've got all this land, we've got access, we've got, you know, a road here, there are bigger issues involved when you have a major retailer that you're trying to snag. And we have to think carefully, long and hard, and develop strategies to go after those folks. And the frontage road that we did get on the south side, the fact that it took us five years to get that point, that's about how long it might take to get something like that to happen. You have to overcome the obstacles. And we do have strategies in place for not only that intersection, but others along 820, and there are behind-the-scenes work going on all the time that we can't talk about to try to get us past those obstacles to relate to the business points that will actually bring those big box users. The other example that you brought up is more of a redevelopment-type area. They're on Denton Highway and Stanley Keller. That used to be a grocer long ago. It's almost like history repeating itself with the Wynn Dixie further north that they're going out of business. But that site, again, if you look at the income levels, you're not going to attract what you would like to see there. Doesn't mean that that building and the shopping center around it doesn't represent an asset. It does. And I do have something that I'm pursuing on that center, as far as a game plan, that would bring, I think, substantial sales tax to this community. It's going to take everything I can do and a lot of good luck to maybe make it happen, but it won't be something obvious that you'd think ought to be going there like a grocer. It's just not, it's just not a marketplace for grocery, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. I think we've probably explored the subject of economic development sufficiently tonight. Let's move on to, to other subjects. Any other member of the audience wish to address the council at this time? Okay, I'll ask one more time, and then we'll move on to Councilmember Hurley's motion. Anyone in the audience wish to address the council at this time? Okay, there being none, Councilmember Hurley, I believe we're ready for your motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we table this proposal with the city managers on the budget cuts for the time being, in order to give the council time to meet and go through some work sessions and, and introduce their priorities. I'm sure we don't have any magic bullets to shoot, but the thing of it is, if we all kind of get a, a piece of the action, we all take the blame for it. But I feel like that if it's discussed in work sessions, either executive session, or at least one or two work sessions before next council meeting, that we could come up with something that would be a little bit more hard and fast about figures, that would be more definite.
Okay, you heard the motion from Councilmember Hurley, Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, for a second, Mayor, and I had some comments also, if you'd like.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second, and we're now ready for comments before we display the vote.
Okay, I just, just to, for, I guess for synopsis sake, I'd like to thank Melissa, that's the kind of interaction that we need. I'd like to once again remind everybody that's here, that's an employee, if you have a suggestion on ways that we can save money and things that we can do, please get them to us, and please do it in a positive way. You know, we're in this together, us hollering and screaming at each other and doing all that's not going to do any good. Let's figure out some kind of positive and productive way to make things better for all of us. Encourage y'all, I know that you already work hard, but do everything you can to, to work even a little bit harder if we can do it, you know, and, and make it a little bit better on all of us. Like to also reemphasize to the citizens and the people that are viewing, encourage people to spend your money here, now more than ever. You know, don't go to North Richland Hills to buy groceries just because you can go into a new building. Go to Kroger. You know, do the things we need to do to help ourselves. We have to help ourselves before we can ask anyone to help us. I guess, encourage y'all to do everything we can. I know, I know the council members that I've served with so far will put forth, you know, any effort necessary to do everything we can to, if we can get around any of this, we will. We'll do everything we can to, to work hard to make sure that this is as, you know, as painless as possible. But I just encourage all of you, let's, let's be positive, let's be productive, let's not, not start a bunch of rumors out there. Let's wait till we get the hardcore facts, because this is a long process. As you can see tonight, we're not ready to jump into anything. You know, I'm not for sure, and I, I hopefully, I, I'm pretty sure I can speak for the other colleagues that are here. We have two new members that are going to come onboard next week, bring some new ideas, hopefully, to the council, and, you know, we're going to work hard on this, but we have to work hard on it together. And I know I've heard a bunch of rumors already, we're laying off firemen, we're cutting policemen, we're doing this, we're doing that. I got this document, like they said, I, I started it, you know, we had an election last week. I started looking at this thing Saturday evening after that election was over. I'm not going to make a decision on someone's livelihood in, in 72 hours, you know? I'm going to look at it, and we're going to go through and exhaust every avenue that we have to make sure we do what we can and do our job to make sure this thing's done as painless as possible. So, I just want to ask everybody to do everything you can, remain positive. You know, positive, positive thoughts and positive ideas tend to breed, you know? There's enough negative out there, let's do things, and let's turn this community around and make it a better, not only a better place to work, but a better place to live.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any more discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, Councilmember Williams?
One thing I'd like to add to what Mr. Fowler said, I agree with him about doing all the purchasing you can in Halton City, but the idea about making suggestions and turning them in, it's, it's not really a joke thing. It's, it's, y'all are out there, y'all know what the problems are, y'all know if there's any waste. Feel free to turn those in. Pat, can they drop that in the water drop box if they want, say, anonymous? Just put it in an envelope after hours. We don't have a camera out there or anything, just, just throw it in there, type it, whatever you want to do. And I would like to, if it's all right with the mayor and the council, to have those copied to each one of the council members that come in. And maybe we'll get some ideas from the city employees.
Mr. Torres, did you have a concern you wanted to raise at this time?
I guess a couple of things, addressing the meeting, when we're going to meet again, if we could come to some agreement on the date and the time.
I would leave it up to you to schedule this, coordinate with the rest of the council. I'm free anytime.
I will be uptown until Sunday night.
Okay. Next week, is that, was that your intention?
At your convenience, the sooner the better, probably.
Tuesday night, potentially? I'd like to, I'd, I'd prefer not to roll it into the regular meeting schedule for Monday night, but if Tuesday will work for you possibly, or, or Thursday if next week...
That'd be fine.
Tuesday?
It could take a couple of meetings to...
It could, so...
...finalize this thing, because you'll have to come back with some figures after our first meeting.
Okay. Well, let's, let's get the first one going for Tuesday night at 6 o'clock, if that's all right with you.
All right.
Anything else as far as this motion's concerned?
Well, it's not, you're through with the motion, I think.
Hey. No further discussion. If you'll register your vote, we display that, and as you see, passes by unanimous vote of all council present. We have completed the items on the agenda. I think Mr. Torres would like to make a final statement before we are adjourned.
You know, I, I think it's important to, to reemphasize a couple of points that have been brought up here tonight, and I don't want to, I don't want to be seen as jumping on anyone's language, but what I, what I... but what I, what I would really like to point out, and many of you probably have not seen this document in the normal course of your work, this is our budget that was adopted earlier for this year. At the very beginning of this document is a, is a letter, seven or eight pages, I believe, it's a message, basically, summarizing, highlighting the budget, what's in there. I'd like to recommend that you get your hand on it whenever you can, and just read through that a little bit. I think you'll, you'll learn a little bit about, about that letter, and what was, what was planned originally in this, in this document. And then I'd really like to point to the very last page, and it's entitled Conclusion. The very beginning of that, it, it addresses my thoughts on city employees being an asset to this organization. For every year that I have been involved in the budget process, I have harped heavily on this fact, that the city employees are the best asset this organization has. Without you, we can't deliver the services. Without you doing quality work, we can't deliver quality services. Can't emphasize it enough. Every year, I emphasize it to this council, when I'm in here recommending improved benefits, improved pay, whatever the situation, we have to take care of our employees, and I'm, and I'm still totally focused on that. However, I think myself, finance director, all the directors, have been put in a very difficult situation. You know, our job is to, is to watch out for employees, and look out for your best interest, and keep you happy, and you'll keep us happy, and just work together on that. But, you know, our job is also to look out for the overall integrity, the financial integrity of this organization. And so I hope that, I hope that you can really appreciate that. Many of you, you know, you have jobs that are, that are focused in other areas, and everybody has value. But our job, my job primarily, is to keep the administration of this organization going, and do it in a, in a very responsible, accountable way. And when, when you're faced in a downturn economy like this, and this is the first time I have ever had to be involved in a situation like this, you know, you probably make mistakes, we've probably made some mistakes in going through this process, and I hope like heck I never have to go through it again. But, but I want, I want you to know that, I truly believe that your presence and your participation in this organization is vitally important. You know, don't, just because I have to come to the table with a recommendation, very hard recommendation, a recommendation that, that's very difficult to do, I, I just don't want any part of it, but I have to do it, it's my job. Much like some of you have to do a job that you don't really want to. So I hope you can appreciate that. Please read that letter, it's got some important stuff in it, and it, those are my words, and what I've said in there, I truly mean, and hopefully you'll appreciate that as well.
Mr. Torres, if you would, you've encouraged our citizens to get a copy of the budget, read especially the introduction and the conclusion. You wanna tell them where they can get copies of that, or have access to?
I know that a copy of this is on file with the city secretary, copies of this are on file at the library, copies are on file, Pat has numerous copies, if, you know, I have a few copies left over, sorry. All right, okay. It's a, we don't print any extras, they're not cheap to print, but I do have some I could lend people, if somebody wants, there's a standard price, I think about twenty-two dollars for it, it's three hundred and twenty-six pages. But let's don't charge anybody. I'll give you my copy. All guys, just come by and get it. Like I said, well, yeah, I'll lend, the library lends too, I don't wanna compete with the library, but I've got budgets, people can see them.
Is it possible to photocopy just those first seven pages, the last couple of pages, for our citizens who might?
And make it available in the city secretary's office, Brenda can probably do that for us, so.
Can you put those pages on webpage?
On a web, yeah.
Just drop in the cell.
I didn't say that.
Say that out, say that for everybody, please.
I was asking if the city secretary can have those pages listed also on the webpage?
Yes, we can.
And those who have the computer capacity can look at them that way.
It's very important during a downturned economy for information to be full and free and be flowing, for everybody to know, to have access to as complete information as we're able to provide. We don't have any secrets, we're not trying to, to do anything, except as Mr. Torres indicated, to be very responsible with the stewardship that, that we have as elected officials and as administration for, for our city here. Councilmember Fowler, you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I was just gonna recommend that they put those, put a copy of these, like at Public Works, and a couple of areas, that'll wait, the libraries already has one, of course, but maybe Public Works and the fire, you know, fire department, that'll wait, jury's guys, if they have an opportunity to sit around and read it some, and maybe one at the police department, if some people wanna check that one out, or whatever, to look over it. Also, you just, you just mentioned the part about communication. If anyone would like to contact me, whether you be a resident or a, or an employee, and discuss anything, you feel free to call me, I'm not gonna give you my mobile, 'cause I, well, like everybody else, I'm having to pay that bill also, so I stay on it enough. Call me at 817-838-3160, and if you don't get me, just leave a message, and I will return the call. And anyone, like I say, I encourage you to, to give me input, and feel free to speak to anyone that has any comments or questions.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Councilmember Fowler, because it's extremely important during a tough time like this, that especially elected officials be available. And the city secretary has the telephone numbers of all of us, and I, I welcome your calls, or having an opportunity to talk with you about these things. This is a partnership, partnership with employees, with citizens, with elected officials, and we're all in this together, and everybody has ideas and input that's valuable, so please feel free to contact any, any of the elected officials with concerns you have in these areas. Anything further? There being none, we stand adjourned.